Good evening, everybody. The time is 6:30 PM. I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the City Council of the City of Emeryville. The time is 6:22 PM. We have returned from the closed session. And reporting out on item 5.1.1, I will just report out that there was no action taken. This meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format. We're located at 1333 Park Avenue in City Hall. Members of the public may also join us via Zoom using the link provided for on today's agenda. That concludes item six. Item seven is adjournment. Madam Clerk, time is 6:22. This meeting is adjourned. I'd like to ask if April would please take the roll call. And for the members of the public who are at home, we will move to our special meeting at six, begins at 6:30 in a few minutes.
Councilmember Carr.
Present.
Councilmember Mora.
Present.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Present.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Present.
And Mayor Bauders.
Here. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve this agenda.
I move approval of the final agenda. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Welch and a second by Councilmember Carr to approve the agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Mora.
Aye.
Councilmember Pfeiffer. Vice Mayor Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Bauders.
Aye. Ex parte communications. Are there any members of council who've had an ex parte communication for this agenda? Seeing and hearing none. Public comment for non-agenda items. Member of the public who wishes to comment for an item not on tonight's agenda has two minutes to do so. We will have comment for the agenda items that we have listed. Do we receive any written comment cards for this agenda?
No, Mayor.
Okay. At this time, public comment is closed. Turn to the action items. The first action item is 6.1. The Housing Committee's annual report on its committee goals, principles, and accomplishments for calendar year 2022, and proposed priorities for calendar year 2023. So I would invite our Housing Committee, Rod, to come on up. Good evening.
Hello. My name is Rod Jacobat. And I am the Chair of the Housing Committee. Briefly, the Housing Committee provides input and recommendations regarding city policies, priorities, and feedback related to the city's housing policies and programs. Next. In 2022, the Housing Committee was very busy. The Housing Committee recommended approval or adoption by the City Council on the following, following items. One of the most significant items that occurred was the City Council's adoption of the 2023-2031 Housing Element, which was also certified by the California Housing and Community Development Department in February 2023, making Emeryville the second jurisdiction in Alameda County to have a certified housing element. For 2023, staff outlined the following action items for the Housing Committee. The action items are broken down into four categories, reflecting required reporting, housing development, housing plan guidelines, and housing element action items. While all action may not be able to be accomplished this year, the Housing Committee will be, will work with staff to ensure as many of these actions are discussed. The Housing Committee's priority is homeownership and improving the homebuyer's assistance program. Homebuyer assistance is funded, is a funded program in the housing bond plan and supports the following housing element policies. Promote ownership opportunities and utilize local financing sources to assist making housing more affordable. The Housing Committee's second priority is preservation of the existing rental housing stock and the development of programs guidelines to support the rental preservation program. Rental preservation is funded in the housing bond plan and supports the following housing element policies. Provide monetary incentives for housing projects targeted to low and moderate income households and facilitates the rehab of the city's existing housing stock to address housing deficiencies, increase the useful life of systems, and increase accessibility for residents. Thank you very much. And this is the list of the members of the, of the committee.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Before, don't go too far. We'll let, for public comment. Is there a member of the public who wishes to comment on the report of the Housing Committee before we take Councilmember questions and comments? Do we receive any written comments for this or other items on the agenda?
No, Mayor.
Okay. So I've seen no public comment. That's closed. We'll turn to the members of the council. Are there questions or comments for the Housing Committee? Member Pfeiffer. Can you use your microphone?
Yeah. How many people, thank you, Mayor Bauders. How many people, and thank you for your presentation. How many people participate in the housing assistance program? And also, when it comes to data, how do we, do we know are people of color, are people who are first-time homebuyers? Like, do we have any data around that?
I will turn to the wonderful.
I'll try to assist in answering that question. Valerie Bernardo, the Secretary of the Housing Committee. We currently don't actually collect data on the demographics of all of the households. One of the programs that we do have in the new housing element is to start tracking that information. So we don't currently have that. In regards to how many people we've served through our existing homebuyer assistance program, we've had over 230 loans in our homeownership portfolio. However, in the past five years, we've only serviced one person, which is why the committee really wants to work on trying to figure out what we need to do to revise the guidelines to make it more accessible and usable in today's market. The last time the guidelines were updated was in 2013, right after the foreclosure crisis. So the guidelines really are reflecting the market then, and things have drastically changed since then. So we need to make some changes so that it can be more user-friendly. But we will be able to report in the future how many people are assisted and demographic information on them.
Awesome. Thank you. As a follow-up, the, is there anything that you need from us as a city council to support? I guess, updating the guidelines, trying to get more people to, to participate? Is there anything that we can do?
Yeah, you guys have actually already done it. So when we adopted the housing plan, one of the programs we put in there was adding additional funding to support homeownership assistance, which the council adopted unanimously. And then also in the adoption of the housing element, identifying that as a policy and a program that the city really wanted us to focus on. So you guys have already provided us with the direction. Excuse me, I have a cold, so I have a cough drop in my mouth. But you guys have already provided us with the direction to kind of move forward. We've identified that since it does appear to be a priority for not just the Housing Committee and council and the community, it's one of our goals to have that implemented within two years. So the committee really wants to start with that. So hopefully, we'll have something to bring back to the council for adoption later this year or early next year.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Others with questions or comments? No? I want to, as a former member of the Housing Committee, was where I got my start here in Emeryville, actually. I just want to thank you for your service to the committee and to all the other members. It's a, it's a fun committee to be part of, actually. And I, I'm jealous that you guys are going to get to spend some time on the Christie sites this year as well. I think there's a lot of opportunity there. That's a neighborhood that's really changed a lot in the last 15 years. And this particular housing opportunity at the, the three redevelopment sites is going to be a real changer for the residents who are already in that community, especially the low-income ones that are going to have an opportunity to be part of that neighborhood. So thank you in advance for the work you do and providing that feedback.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I want to congratulate Valerie for the outstanding work she does. It's, I mean, she prepared the presentation and it's a permanent assistance. She's giving us, the committee is, I mean, it's like a luxury to have.
I appreciate you saying that. As somebody who has had the chance to work with Ms. Bernardo for a number of years, she is by far one of the most special employees we have in the city, and she does a very invaluable service for us. So I agree with you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Valerie. Item 6.2 is the Parks and Recreation Committee's annual report on committee goals, principles, and accomplishments for calendar year 2022 and its proposed priorities for the committee in calendar year 2023. Good evening.
Okay.
You pull the mic up so we can hear you at home. There you go. Thanks.
Okay. Let me pull this up. Oh, it's on the tab.
It's the second one right there. Great.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Alejando Anasol. I am the chairperson of the Emeryville Parks and Recreation Committee. I've been a member of the committee for the past three years. I started in July 2020. This is my first time today in the city councils. It's nice to be here. A little bit of background about me. I am currently, my, I work in the field of fire ecology and forestry for the Contra Costa County Resource Conservation District. I am part of the Emeryville Parks and Recreation Committee because I feel an obligation to advocate for the landscapes on which we've built our communities. As part of the Parks Committee, which has been functioning in the city for a couple decades now, we advise the city council on park policy and propose opportunities for new parks and improvements to existing park infrastructure and, and priority setting for our public spaces in the city. This past year, we've had a pretty, we made a lot of accomplishments this year. We updated and finished the improvements on the Point Emory project. We opened, thanks to my colleague Patty and her advocacy over many years. The Davenport Park is now open to the public. We started developing a citywide park survey. We've worked with representatives from the city to advocate for parks and park infrastructure in the CIP process. We successfully developed and the city council adopted our recommendation, again, thanks to my colleague Patty for nature play in the city. We've also implemented, for many years, there had been a plan to improve the McLaughlin Shoreline Park, which is, for those of you who are not aware, is the strip of land to the east of the firehouse. It's a very beautiful piece of land that has been, you know, is used, but there are, there is funding available for improvement. And this year, we started the process of improving that space. And finally, we've had numerous conversations about how the city, about how the Parks Committee can better impact city policy related to parks in, in this, in our community. In this next, in our next, in our coming, in the coming year, we will continue to work on our CIP project list as that process moves along. We will launch the survey that we developed last year. And we will continue to advocate for the treatment of parks as essential infrastructure throughout city operations, management, planning, and funding. Additionally, we will turn our focus to a discussion of native tree canopy cover in the city and how we can increase the tree canopy cover. We will continue to advocate for progress on the McLaughlin Shoreline project to ensure that that's completed in a timely manner. And we will continue to advocate for nature play space and opportunities for our young people. On your screen, you can see a couple images. This is the McLaughlin East Shore State Park that I was speaking about earlier. You can see there's kind of a de facto trail that, that would be developed formally as part of the ongoing work. This is a fun, this is a fun picture, kind of showing the, looking east along, along the peninsula. You can see it's a very beautiful spot that is currently underutilized. But once, once improvements are made, I'm sure the public will enjoy this space. This is, these are a couple pictures of Davenport Park, which opened last month and is now being used by the community. And then we have a couple images here of the Point Emory improvements that were completed, I think, late last year as well. So moving on, we've consolidated agenda items tonight. We have several recommendations that we've adopted as a committee in our past meetings due to the change in process of how the city council operates. We are now presenting that tonight. Our first recommendation is for a dedicated staff for parks operations, planning, and development. Currently in the city, planning of new parks and maintenance of new parks is divided between the Community Services Department and the Public Works Department. There is not one individual in either of those departments whose time is completely dedicated to parks. Oftentimes, we've been informed it's a small percentage of an individual's time is dedicated to thinking about parks, planning them, and looking for funding sources for new parks. This, we've identified this as a weakness in the city, and it holds us back from being able to provide these spaces for our communities. If, if the city council decides to appoint or institute a role that is dedicated to parks, that would allow us to, you know, currently, if we've made a recommendation, for instance, the McLaughlin Shoreline Park, you know, has moved to you, has been implemented, city staff are working on that. It's, but that's the only project that they have capacity to work on. So we're kind of like at one project at a time currently in terms of how we can move forward with our park development in the city. So you can imagine, you know, that means that it will take us, you know, many, many years, maybe decades, you know, to actually make progress in parks development. Even a part-time, like a half-time role would be an improvement over what we have today. Our second recommendation to the council, although I'll also, let me add a little bit more to that first recommendation. You know, I think parks, as a forester and a fire ecologist, I recognize that for, for us to have truly sustainable communities, we must nurture in our community relationships with the land on which, on which we have built our communities. The way that this body can do that is to have a person who is dedicated to seeking out options for funding and implementing those funding and planning for future parks. So, yeah. Our next item on this list is to reintroduce the council liaison to the Parks Committee. Late last year, we were informed Scott Donahue had been a member of the Parks Committee and provided valuable input for many, many years. Upon his retirement, we were informed that there would not be a replacement for him. That was a surprise to the committee and a disappointment because he provided us and enabled us to engage with, with the city council in a proactive way and to be aware of what was going on. And now we kind of have to wait, you know, a meeting or two to have our questions answered. When previously, it was a, it was a much quicker process. So we are recommending that the city council return to that model of council representatives on the committee. For the third item, my colleague Patty will comment on the Stanford Park fencing and incorporating nature play during the public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, we'll take public comment. A member of the public who wishes to comment on the Parks and Recre- So just to be clear, you're giving a separate presentation or you're giving public comment? I thought, yeah. Okay, this is your turn to speak now. Yep. Yep. Three minutes for public comment, please.
I would like to go over three minutes, if possible.
Was this part of the presentation or public comment?
Presentation.
It's part of the presentation, yeah.
Staff, okay. So let's clear that up. Okay, so we're not in public comment then. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm going to speak on our recommendations for Stanford Park. I had some slides. Are they available?
I think there's three more slides on this. So you might want to just try clicking on the down arrow that you see on the top. Did we leave a cursor for her? Just click that, click that down arrow next to the 10. No, no, no.
On the keyboard.
Could I ask a staff person to just help her, please? Thank you. And click on that arrow right there. Yep.
Okay. Okay, so this is Stanford Park. Our first recommendation for Stanford Park is to fully enclose the area of the two playgrounds. This map shows in red where fencing is needed on the east and west ends. Where less than 100 feet is required on each side. The north and south both already have existing fencing. This is a public safety issue. The obvious reason to enclose the playgrounds is for the physical safety of wandering children. Young children don't understand street safety and require intense, close, and constant supervision. Older children that do understand still can't always control their impulses and still need to be constantly watched. Even with such supervision, we still see kids run into the street at Stanford. It still happens even when a parent or caregiver is doing the best they can, especially if they're watching more than one kid. Enclosed fencing also benefits the mental health of both children and their grownups. Reducing the need for constant supervision interference, one, allows children to play freely, resulting in uninterrupted play that is critical for healthy brain development. And two, allows exhausted parents and caregivers the chance to relax and connect. I think we all know by now that mental health is important for children and. I think we all know by now that mental health is important for children and those that care for them. Our recommendation is supported by the community. In the 2018 park survey, many respondents specifically requested enclosed fencing at Stanford Park, and this is supported by what we hear from families in the neighborhood. The committee has discussed this closure for over four years now, where it has lingered in that gray area between a maintenance project and an infrastructure project. Without proper staff dedicated to parks, it slipped through the cracks. This recommendation is long overdue. We ask for your help in implementing this important public safety measure sooner rather than later. Our second recommendation for Stanford Park is to transform a small, underused area of lawn into an area for children to experience nature. This can be done with minimal effort or expense. The area is the small triangle on the north side. You can't really see one edge of the triangle because it's covered by trees. That's what we've identified. In October 2022, our committee made a recommendation to council that the city develop a children and nature program promoting equitable access to nature and all the benefits it has on children's mental, physical, emotional, and social health. Our recommendation included a list of low-cost and low-effort first steps, steps, including strategically placing natural materials around parks and other areas in ways that promote engagement with nature. The committee has requested that this at meetings for years, where it also lingered in a gray area and was not acted on. It is a simple way to promote engagement with nature that does not require design, funding, or meeting of safety standards. We also have had some informal conversations with staff about this, most recently with our new city manager. There doesn't seem to be any opposition to the idea of connecting our city's children to nature, though there is some concern about priority, funding, staff time, and safety. While those must be considered at great length for extensive implementation of a program, a few minor additions to our parks, starting with Stanford, can be done with extremely minimal effort. It's missing a slide.
Didn't like that middle slide, did it?
It's missing a slide, and that is okay. It, okay. Well, I'll go on. Plants can cost as little or as much as the city chooses. San Francisco has a robust children and nature program with guidelines for sensory and immersive experiences. That was my slide, it was the guidelines. And following that was a slide of their list of plants that are non-toxic, non-poke-y, yet native, hardy, colorful, smelly, and architected. Our committee can have an ad hoc meeting to select plants from the list and determine exactly where to put them, reducing the city's level of required effort even more. Logs and stumps are free and even easier. For clarification, I've prepared some visuals of how innocuous our recommended types of logs and stumps truly are. These are small, stable, ground-level logs that anyone can sit on. If there's still concern about stability, they can be cut lengthwise so they lay flat on the ground. The stumps are also small, stable, and ground-level, and can be made twice as wide in diameter as tall, increasing stability. It really is this simple. Trees exist, sometimes they fall, and they can be returned to the land and community as logs and stumps at parks. Our city sadly lost many trees during recent storms and is losing more today. In the past, they have been woodchipped. In the future, let's instead use them at our parks as a healthy way to engage a child's senses by feeling the bark, smelling the wood, and experiencing the rich cycle of life as they watch it age over time. There are very simple ways for children to have nature infused into their lives, with all the benefits that go with it. And you don't need to go looking for funding for this one. I will conclude with more data from the 2018 survey. The second most requested amenity at Stanford Park was trees and plants, right after the request for shade, which, again, would be trees. While trees are quite an effort, we hope the city can consider finding the minimal funds required for a few plants to accompany nature's free gifts of logs and stumps. Do I stay for questions?
We take public comment now if your presentation is done. And now is the time for public comment. A member of the public who wishes to comment on the Parks and Recreation Committee's report has three minutes to do so. You're welcome to approach the mic, state your name, and go ahead and speak.
Hi, my name's Andrea. I'm also a member of the Parks Committee. I am here today to just really touch briefly on our request for the native tree canopy and really trying to connect the dots between that request for urban planning and the way that it relates to coastal cities' climate preparedness, especially in light of recent storms. I'd also like to point out that the largest acreage of park space in the city right now is the Marina Park, coming in around seven acres. And so when we look at how we are managing our parks, our coast, our coastline, and the windbreaks that the trees did provide are relevant to our recommendations. And I really just want to keep coming back to this idea of coastal preparedness and how our urban planning and parks advocacy tie into the, like, overall health and climate resilience of our coastal city. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public who wish to comment on the Parks and Recreation Committee report? Okay, seeing none, public comment is closed, and we'll now turn to you members for--
Mayor, excuse me, we received some written comments on this item, yes.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. They're, they're all pretty short. Dear City Council, I write in support of fencing the playground at Stanford Park. My kids go to daycare around the corner, and when I take them there, and it is so hard to watch them, especially since they like to use opposite corners of the play area because they're of separate ages. Thanks for your consideration. That's from Pablo Gutierrez. I support Patty and her efforts to create safe play spaces in Emeryville for our children. Please add the extra fencing to enclose it and also add plants. Sincerely, Fran Quittle. To Emeryville City Council Representatives, we are residents of Emeryville and have a four-year-old who is excited to run and play at the many parks available in Emeryville. Our concern is Stanford Park does not have any fencing. We would love for Stanford Park, as well as other Emeryville parks, to have fencing to enclose the playground for the safety of the youth and using that park. Please take this into consideration when addressing the needs of Emeryville parks. Leo and Jessica Alvarado. Greetings, I am an Emeryville resident, and without exception, I believe that all playgrounds for children be totally fenced in for the safety of children who use them. Also would like to see some nature and free play area with native plantings. Thank you, Marilyn Nossen. That's all, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. So now, public comment is closed, and we'll turn to council members for questions or comments. Vice Mayor Welch.
Thank you both for that presentation. I am definitely in support of fencing. I have a very active three-year-old who I've had to stop from running across Christie while playing at Christie Park. And I think it's, it's a really simple solution, and it's, is a public safety issue. So, I agree, and thank you for including that in your priorities.
Thank you, Councilmember Corr.
Thank you, both of you, for the presentation, and I echo Vice Mayor's comments. I think this, the part about there being a dedicated person, don't, isn't Public Works part of that?
Ask the city manager to address the question.
So, yes, Councilmember Carr, Public Works is the department, as the presenter said. It's, some of the work happens with committee services and some with Public Works when it comes to planning and implementing park amenities and changes and designs and creation.
So Publics, Public Works would be in charge of putting the, the boundary or the fence? Would that--
Public Works would be the department that would handle that.
And we wouldn't need dedicated staff for that, correct?
You would need dedicated funding for that.
Dedicated funding, okay. What do we need to get that done?
So, what I, what I would suggest is that the Parks Committee has made, hopefully you've also made your recommendations in the CIP, and this is an item I saw on the list. So when we have our CIP discussion in about a month or so, the council will be presented with a series of projects that it could choose to put into the capital investment plan, and then with the funding from that, it can be used to prioritize and fund projects in the city, including that. Others with comments? Councilmember Mora?
Thank you for those, the presentation and shining a light on some of the issues around parks. Seems like one issue is kind of around workflow and how recommendations get received and acted upon within the city. And the other one are your specific recommendations around the Stanford Park, which it seems like you've done a lot of legwork on already. You've done the surveys, you've talked to parents, you've figured out low-cost solutions. It's looking like this council is very much in favor of moving quickly on those. And hopefully, we can, well, from my perspective, I'm wondering, you know, as far as capital improvement, I mean, what is 10 feet of fencing on each side, right? It doesn't seem like that much. At what point is something a capital improvement versus like some quick build safety item? So maybe there's another avenue to implement something like that?
I'm going to let staff respond to the, the comment.
Yeah, thank you for the comment, Councilmember. There's no hard and fast rule about where the line is between regular maintenance or a, a quick build project and what's part of the CIP. We have had this discussion, as one of the presenters alluded to, around this and other projects. And as the mayor said, my recommendation is to have it be something that gets considered as part of the, the CIP funded projects moving forward. And right now, there's a survey open related to the CIP, and projects are getting developed as potential additions to it.
Thanks for that. Yeah, just to, because, so that, that kind of highlights the Stanford Park issue. And then the other one about process, right? How would it, so the, the recommend, these recommendations, which were mentioned, were bounced around for a few years. How do those maybe get staff attention or maybe committee attention faster?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so, you know, I, I think there's a couple elements to this. One is, you know, there are always more projects than we have staff to do in the amount of time that we would like to do them. So part of this is prioritizing for staff what projects council wants us to work on first. Part of it is, also happens through the budget projects, the budget process and the budget adoption, including the CIP wherein projects are identified for funding. So then, once there's a set of projects that are identified for funding, funding has been supported for those projects through the council's budget adoption process, then staff has a list of, of sort of marching orders on what they move forward with. My understanding, and I'll, I'll defer to the mayor here, is that there is typically been a council priority-setting process whereby those projects, you know, of all the projects that we have out there, they're prioritized, and then that would be the order in which staff would address each of the, the many outstanding projects that various parts of the community want to have happen.
Yeah, I'll just elucidate on that. There's, there's two priority lists that we create. One is, we have created a council priorities and goals, which isn't limited to a project specifically. It could be a policy, it could be anything we, we wanted work on or have the staff work on in the city. And that's usually like a high-level thing. It wouldn't be necessarily something at this level, like a minor improvement to a park. Those are like very large items, and there's usually a list of about 10. And when we take stuff off the list annually, we add new things to the list. But within the CIP process and the CIP, there are buckets of issues, right? So there are housing projects in the CIP, there are environmental projects, there are park projects. And those, those projects are then prioritized within those categories. So the council could say in the CIP, we'd like to prioritize the funding in the buck, in this bucket for the Stanford Park fencing project by way of example. And so then what staff have is the guidance for how to take those items off the list as they come. Okay, Councilmember Pryce.
Yeah, so we haven't sat with you and hashed out what our priorities are yet. And so that definitely is something that we should, maybe we should work on, on, on doing that so that, so that City Hall has the instructions as to what this city council would like to see happen moving forward. And I agree with the mayor in terms of the capital improvement projects and us keeping an eye on, on how we can better improve. The Stanford side, right? That's the side that, because I'm looking at it now, other than a slow children-at-play sign that's there, there's like really nothing in between. Because on the other side, the water south, the water tower side, that has like some fencing because it's like, it's like a business office or a corporate office. But on the other side, it looks like it's--
On actual Stanford, there's a fence as well.
Please use the microphone so people at home can hear you.
On the, on actual Stanford Avenue, there's, is a fence, but it's, it ends before the walkways that head out to the streets.
Got it, okay. Yeah, because I'm looking at the, so Google Map, you have the basketball court, and you have like one kind of place where, if you have a bike, you can, you can like lock up your bike. But other than that, it's a miserable-looking park. Yeah.
That is one block of the park. There's two blocks. The second block has the two play structures.
Okay. Okay, okay, yep, I see it. Okay. Okay, awesome. So the improvements that you're, you're speaking of, is it on the miserable side or is it on the play, the, the play structure side?
The play structure side. Well, the, the fencing definitely needs to be completed on the play structure side. And the area for the plants, the like five plants, whatever you guys are willing to-- fund, and the free logs and stumps, the small logs and stumps or ground-level would be in the triangle area at the north end, along the fence where the building is.
Okay. Okay.
Also, that, that triangle is a little miserable.
Yeah, okay, got it, yeah. Yeah, I, I could kind of see that, yeah. I, I agree. I, I mean, I defer to, of course, my, my councilmember colleagues who actually have small children, and so that is their lived experience. And so I defer to them, and I, and I agree with Councilmember Welsh in terms of it just being a, also a public safety issue. I mean, these, when it's not beautified, if it's just a park that looks there and looks neglected, then it attracts a whole bunch of elements that necessarily isn't good for the neighborhood and good for the city. And so, so I appreciate your efforts in trying to redesign how, how our kids play in nature. In terms of the, the dedicated person, yeah, that's definitely something that, that we needed to really, that we need to take a look at. Yeah, and so Parks, Parks and Recs need some love, and, yeah. And if it's a capital issue, then, you know, we're, we're smart enough to try to figure it out. And so, thank you for bringing that. And thank you for being, you know, a committee that actually comes to us and says, hey, you know, these are some issues. And so, and I, I appreciate that because it actually gives us work to do. So, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any final comments or questions that you had to hand up?
I, I did. I was wondering the difference, is there a safety budget versus a capital improvement? Or does that come out of the same bucket? I would imagine that if it's a safety issue, it needs to be addressed rather-- I mean, there are several issues that, that have been raised today, but the fencing, like Councilmember Mora said, it's 10 feet of fencing on, if it's not a nominal cost--
I think it's 100 feet on each side.
Less than 100 feet on each side.
Oh, less than 100 feet.
About 90 on one and 70 on the other.
So, again, safety items are also part of the public works process. So identifying this problem is the helpful thing to do. And so what we can reasonably ask staff to do today, I think staff have heard everybody, is that bring a CIP item that includes improvements to Stanford Park to the discussion in the month or so that we're going to have it for this item so that the council can then ask the questions about funding it, staffing it, timing for it, et cetera, and then put it into a direction and a process that gets it done. I think that's the, city manager would agree with it, that's what you're hearing?
Yes.
All right. Very briefly, because we're out of time and we have another committee.
Can somebody just confirm it is on the CIP survey and there is a dollar amount associated with it?
There's no dollar amount because it's not been studied, yeah.
I would, we met with Mohammed, our committee, and Paul, and he said it is in that gray area between a maintenance project and a capital project. So if, I would also, we've, it has been four years, we've been talking about this. We finally got it in front of the committee. Part of that's on our end, not really understanding how things worked and that we needed to do this. But I would urge you to look into that, it being a maintenance issue, because it's been a long time coming. It's a long overdue recommendation. It's a long overdue recommendation, slip through the cracks.
If you have anything to say, go ahead. No, hold on, he's, are you done?
It's, yeah, the the brief comment is, you know, there's a number of orders of magnitude difference between what I imagine this costs and some of the other projects on the survey. And I think we want to try to be a city that has methods, mechanisms to move more quickly on things like this. So that's just something I want to, I think the council has spoken on and and hopefully staff has heard.
Member Pryforce.
Very quickly, and if we do have someone dedicated, yeah, I mean, we do have, I think, some of the planning covered by Public Works. So they would more than likely, the skill set we would focus on is them being able to fundraise. So we're spending money to get more money. And so a big fundraiser on on your side, so thanks.
Okay.
Do any members of the council have questions about the council liaison to the committee? Reintroducing the council liaison?
We've we've received your request, and it won't be an item that we can have a full discussion on because it's not agendaed as such, but we've received your request and the council can have it as a future agenda item at a council meeting as an agenda item. Yes. Okay, thank you so much for your presentation. We will go to item 6.3, which is the Public Art Committee's annual report on committee goals, principles, and accomplishments for calendar year 2022. Good evening.
Good evening. I'll just adjust this just a moment. And wait for the slides to come up. Great, thank you. My name's Emily McPartlin, and I'm the chair of the Public Arts Committee. And I first wanted to just say thanks to all of our committee members and Amber Evans, our city liaison, who spends so much time and dedication to make this committee great. So we can go to the next slide. We are so excited to add another mural this year to our public murals. It is Olivier R's mural Light on the Bay, and you can see it at the fire station number 35 on Hollis Street, and I really recommend everybody goes and sees it. It's a great new addition to all of our murals in the city. Next slide, please. So for our purchase award, this program started in 2005, and the first purchase was in 2006. And for this year, we are so excited to add Ken Kalman's sculptures to our collection, and they will be exhibited outside of this very building on the exterior. So very excited to have kind of an outdoor sculpture piece to add to our exhibit. We wrap up the sixth phase of our temporary bus shelter with the, and we've had three artists this year, and we'll have two more as it ends in August 2023. But I'll talk more about that as we go along. Next slide. A part with in collaboration with the community grants this year, we had a new program where we awarded visual grants to four people, one of which was installed this year, and then three more will be install or last year, and three more will be installed this year. So I look forward to those popping up around the city. Next slide. I want to encourage everybody to check out our new Art in Public Places program website. We're so excited to have five city-commissioned works, two of which were added in 2022. And then there were 15 Pangea Sea Festival murals added and some by private organizations. So we are now a city with so many beautiful murals all around, and you can find the locations at this website. As long as well as self-guided tours and what's new section. So please check this out, it's on the Art in Public Places on the City of Emeryville's website. Go ahead. Okay, and we for our top priorities, we're very excited to hopefully contribute to the capital improvements program. In collaboration with the city, we want to work on the Temiscall Creek Greenway as well as the 40th San Pablo and Avenue Transit Hub. In collaboration, we hope to make these spaces have more public art and be aesthetically pleasing, along with also perhaps helping with wayfinding. So we hope to collaborate with everybody on this. As you might have heard before, we've had ongoing, hopefully, collaboration with Ned Kahn to install a piece of his artwork. We are looking for a location, and upon site feasibility, we hope to either do it at the new Point Emory or at the City Hall Foundation. So we'll keep you posted on that. A high priority of the committee is also to take care of the art that we already have. One piece that we're working on restoration is the Neighborhood Convergence, which is under the I-80 pass, kind of as you're going out to the interchange there. Next slide, please. As I spoke, we're finishing the sixth phase, and we'll move to the seventh phase of the Bell Shelter program. We're going to have a call for artists. And I also wanted to take the time to note that this has now been named the Sharon Wiltshire Temporary Art Bus Shelter in honor of our beloved member who chaired the committee and had so much dedication, and we couldn't be here without her. So just thank you so much, Sharon, for everything you did for this committee while you chaired it and were a member of it for so long. So thank you. Some other priorities is to install the last pieces of the Phase Six of the Bus Shelter. We also, I wanted to know, we put a QR code in that, so that will take you directly to our website, which is really fantastic to learn more about public art in Emeryville. There's three years of funding of Rotten City Cultural District that may offer additional partnership opportunities between the city, advised by PAC, and the district's other partners for art programming. So this is super exciting, and the details are still in the works, but we're excited about it. And that wraps up our presentation, short and sweet, but we just want to thank you for listening, and we'll now take public comment, I guess, or comments.
You you know the steps, yeah. So next is public comment. A member of the public who wishes to comment on the presentation of the Public Art Committee has three minutes to do so. I'd like to recognize Gloria, please, online. Gloria, you've got the opportunity, if you hit unmute, you have three minutes. Gloria, if you want to hit unmute, you have to accept the unmute to get the chances. There you go, go ahead, and you have three minutes.
I'll put up my hand for another issue and that's passed, so that's okay.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other members of the public who wish to comment on an item on the on this item? Do we receive any written comments for this item?
No, mayor, we did not.
Okay, so with that, we will bring it back for discussion. Are there members who wish to ask comments or give questions? Vice Mayor Welch.
I just wanted to thank the Public Art Committee for all of their work to making sure that we have beautiful public art in our spaces and just such a dedicated committee to making sure that our little city has an abundance of art. I truly appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Member Pryforce.
Thank you, mayor. Just want to say thank you as well. I share the sentiments of my council council member colleagues. One of the great things about public art is that that you see names that you recognize in the community. You know, Steve Bronson's a neighbor of mine, actually, that was his wife Gloria Hoosier song. So shout out to you, to to my neighbors. And, you know, I just want to say thank you for 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 all that you do and and really emphasizing the art as a part of, you know, Emeryville art and innovation, so thanks.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions for you. Ned Kahn, was he the artist who we originally had selected for the piece that would go along the Marina break wall that didn't end up getting installed for BCDC reasons? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, so are we hoping to get a similar type of thing? Or do we think that that's going to run into the same problems before in terms? Because he does a lot of stuff with reflection, and I just wondered if we think we'll be able to get that done because BCDC will have to permit it again.
That's one of, so that's why we were talking about site feasibility and something we definitely want to avoid in the future. He does site-specific artworks, so it wouldn't like trans, the exact one he was thinking for Point Emory or for the Marina wouldn't be the same for Point Emory, but it's definitely something that's on our radar, and we will like to avoid having that same situation. So we're taking that into consideration.
Okay, and then the other question I had was the Cultural Art District, the renewal of the three years of funding, how much money is it over the three years, do you know?
I apologize for not knowing the answer to that. I'm not sure if Amber is on Zoom this evening.
Chad is on, and I will.
I could help you.
Chad is on, I'll, Chad, you can go ahead and unmute and answer that question.
I think it is Amber.
This is Amber Evans, Councilwoman Corridor and Secretary to the PAC.
We can't, we can't hear you, Amber, can you speak up?
Yes, I can. This is Amber Evans, Public Art Secretary, and the Cultural District has been awarded $675,000 for a three-year period. And on tomorrow, the partners will be meeting to discuss a five-year plan to be submitted due March 29.
Thank you. And Amber, is that for the installation and maintenance of art or other things as well?
It is not specifically for the installation or maintenance of art. We have talked about a variety of support services such as feasibility of the art center, support for events or activities, collaborative marketing for the district and the city and the other partners within that, for example.
Thank you very much. Just want to appreciate the bus shelter art as well. As a bus rider, I appreciate the work on that, and I'm very interested. I saw just a, I know a sample graphic, but the the Transit Hub art at Transit Hubs is actually really critical to helping people use transit, so I just appreciate all the spaces that you're working on right now. Thank you, Emily.
Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, the time is 7:24. I adjourn this special council meeting. And the time is 7:24, Madam Clerk, and I call to order the City of Emeryville as the successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. This meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format pursuant to, or I'm sorry, present here at City Hall, 1333 Park Avenue, as well as via Zoom. For those who wish to join us, the Zoom link is in the agenda. Madam Clerk, please note that all members are still present for this meeting. This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve this agenda.
I move approval of the agenda.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Welch and a second by Councilmember Corridor, approve the agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Mora.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers.
Aye. Item four is ex parte communications. Are there any members who have an ex parte communication? Seeing and hearing none. Item five is public comment for the consent agenda, or items not on the agenda? Is there any public comment for this meeting tonight? Do we receive any?
No, mayor, did not.
Okay. Item six is the consent calendar. Members, does anyone wish to pull an item or discuss it further? Seeing none, is there any public comment for, oh, we just did that for the consent as well. This time, I'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
I move consent calendar.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Vice Mayor Welch, second by Councilmember Corridor, approve consent. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Mora.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce is absent. Vice Mayor Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers.
Aye. Consent calendar is approved. Item 7.1 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, serving as successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency for approving and authorizing a request for prequalification of bidders for the above-grade demolition and soil excavation project at the Corporation Yard situated at 5679 Horton Street in Emeryville pursuant to an imminent and substantial endangerment order issued by the Department of Toxic Substance Control, along with a feasibility study. Staff.
Mayor, we have Earl James in the waiting room on Zoom. He'll do the presentation. He couldn't make it in person because of the storm, and April can run the, our city, Madam City Clerk can run the PowerPoint.
Good evening, Earl, welcome. And once the PowerPoint is up, you're welcome to begin, go ahead.
Great, thank you. And I apologize for not being there in person. I I ironed my shirt and got my tie on and left my apartment at 5:30 to make it across the Bay Bridge, which a truck had blown over on and traffic was backed up way into the city, so I just couldn't make it. And I'm sorry I'm not there with you live. Over the course of this project, we'll have plenty of opportunities to meet in person. I'm going to quickly go through the proposed implementation of the draft remedial action plan for the former Marshant Whitney site on Horton Street. Next slide, please. And we're going to take a quick look at the review of DTSC imminent and substantial endangerment, ISE, order tasks, a look at the previous work we've done to define the extent and nature of the contamination there, review the proposed remedial action plan and the proposed, some of the impacts of the proposed implementation of that RAP, and then a schedule. Next slide, please. Thank you. So we have in the the course of this project, which started in the 2010 timeframe, created several large documents that report the work that we've done in investigating the contamination at this site, creating an assessment of the human health risk, HHRAI. And those are all summarized in a remedial investigation, RI, report, a feasibility study, which is an FS, and our remedial action plan, which is a RAP. The draft FS RAP and the SEQA documents, ISM and E, are in final steps to approval by DTSC after a public comment period, which was closed in open in December and January. At the site itself, currently fencing and posting are in place, notifying people that it's a hazardous site, and the building has been unoccupied since the Public Works Department left in December of 2012. Next slide, please. This shows the FMW site on Horton Street. The site was into the agency as part of redevelopment in the area related to extending Horton Street through that area and was slated to be used for the Public Works Department. But in the course of investigations that we conducted at Site B to the northwest there, we found elevated concentrations of organic compounds that we traced back to the FMW site and did explorations there. I'll pause for one second here, and I wish I was there so I could do a pointer, but EKI has worked with the agency for, since 1997. We started on Bay Street with the investigation and cleanup of that site. We did Site B in the mid, early 2000s. We did cleanup of the Greenway that extends through the city up to the Berkeley property line there. We worked with the city recently on Horton Landing Park, and we did a cleanup of Parcel D, which is part of the former Sherwin-Williams site development several years back. So the FMW site is kind of the last big project that we're aware of for the agency to take on. Next slide, please. So the site use history, late 1910s to the late 1950s, it was a portion of the Marshant Calculating Machine Company. That company was sort of the forerunner of Silicon Valley in a way. They made desktop instruments to to make desk work go better. They occupied not only the, what we currently call the FMW site, but across Horton Street there and all the way up to Powell. They had other facilities across Horton, and then parking in the brick building that's up on Powell Street there was their office building. There were several different uses by Marshant, and the primary ones that have created the issues here are related to painting and plating operations. Next slide, please. In the early 1960s, the Marshant facilities were leveled kind of down to the ground surface, and then a foot or two of dirt was placed on top of those old facilities, and the current warehouse and parking constructed over the. And the current warehouse and parking constructed over the top of those foundations and pipes and who knows what is under there. Despite the fact that we drilled a lot of holes, it's, we can't really see underneath the concrete and other coverings that are between the building now and what's down there. So the site was occupied from the mid 60s to 1990s by Whitney, also called Whitey Research Tool Company. They made metal valves. They also dealt with volatile organic compounds and contributed to the contamination of the site. The Public Works was using it as their Corporation Yard from 1999 to December 2012. When our investigations indicated it would be best to vacate the building and it's been vacant since that time. Next slide, please. These are maps that show the VOCs, volatile organic compounds, mainly trichloroethylene, T C E, in groundwater. There's a shallow zone that's from sort of the ground surface to about 23 feet down that impacts across the street on Bay Street as well as very heavy impacts on the FMW site itself. A deeper layer down from 23 to 45 feet below the ground surface has some primary impacts that go across to Site B and also onto Site A as well as. On the site itself, in the groundwater is what we call Dean Apple, dense, non-aqueous phase liquid. It's the, the VOC itself is heavier than water and it's down there in its native state in the sands and silts and clays. So it's, and it's very difficult to remove chemicals of that nature at that concentration in this sort of a geologic environment. Next slide, please. The human health risk assessment demonstrate that there were unacceptable risks posed to potential future users of the FMW site and construction workers. It wouldn't be appropriate for any future uses such as commercial, residential, or park without the implementation of risk management measures, which is the remedial plan that we've developed with the oversight of the DTSC and have had go through public comment and are expecting approval of shortly. Next slide, please. The F S RAP went out for public comment in December, ended in January 2023. There were only one set of comments submitted by a consultant for one of the litigants in the litigation, cost recovery litigation related to the site. The DTSC is currently writing up responses to those comments and will finalize the RAP once they're done with that, which should occur in the next couple, two, three weeks. Public communications and sequel work have been done to support the RAP. We've also done an off-site study at the order of the DTSC underneath Bay Street to make sure that those buildings are safe over there. We've got positive results on that. We did some sampling on the northern properties that are adjacent to the FMW site and did interior testing. One of the property owners did their own testing, showing those buildings are safe, which is all, all good news. We also last year conducted a multi-phase extraction pilot test with some equipment that we built five years ago before the Department of Finance stopped the funding and we wanted to finish off that work and gain some valuable information that will help us in the final planning for the remediation. Next slide, please. So to complete the F S RAP implementation, the remedy is to demolish the warehouse that's there and excavate soils mainly down to five feet throughout the site and in an area outside the northeast corner of the building down to 10 feet. Soil excavation, haul those soils and all of the foundations and materials that we find down to five feet off of the site, dispose of them, backfill with clean soils and kind of rebuild the site. We're then going to do in-situ thermal treatment where we bring in four megawatts of electricity and power up copper electrodes that'll be in the ground to boil those VOC chemicals out of the groundwater, capture them in steam and water, clean them up. And it is the most effective way to get those kind of chemicals that are at the concentrations that we find at the FMW site out of the ground and clean it up. And the idea is to get as clean as we can get in order to lessen the long-term problems related to the site and obligations. There will be some post-thermal in-situ work to make sure the water stays clean and potentially some ongoing pumping of groundwater and groundwater monitoring to make sure that everything's going the way we expected it to do. The initial stage is the building demolition and soil excavation. And this is the aspect of the project that you have the resolution to allow us to go out and do contractor pre-qualification so we can establish the pool of people that will bid on the project. The actual letting of the, putting out plans and specs for bidding will be pending DOF funding approval, which should happen in the next couple of weeks. And we anticipate to start the actual physical work after one July 2023. Next slide. So this shows the remediation, which is basically to, the white area is where we're going to dig up the entire site to five feet. The black square that's underneath the dashed square that's underneath the northeast corner of the building is where we would dig down to 10 feet. The VOC concentrations are so high in that area that we're going to have to put up a tent with air cleaning machines on the tent in order to keep the neighborhood safe. I'll show you a picture of that in a second of what it'll kind of look like. And then that tan area with the dots around it is where the in-situ thermal work will occur. Next slide, please. This is a picture of a tent. This one's probably larger than what we'll have on the site. But there will be a tent for a period of time, number of weeks during the process of the soil excavation and off-haul with trucks going in and out of the tent. People inside of the tent will be working in supplied air to keep them safe. And next slide. This is what the in-situ thermal will look like in general once that phase of it starts, which will be in kind of the late 2024, 2025 kind of timeframe. It'll all be behind a fence, but there is piping to pull the steam out and wires to hook up all the electricity and heat the ground down to a depth of about 45, 50 feet below the ground surface and boil these chemicals out of the ground. Next slide, please. So the impacts to the neighborhood and the city are noise and equipment moving around related to the demolition and excavation activities, trucks to off-haul demolition debris and excavated soils and to bring back clean soils to backfill the site and other materials to cap the site. We are going to need to close a portion of Horton Landing Park, that little end of it that comes up to Horton Street alongside the warehouse building during periods of construction, especially during demolition, because the wall of the building is right there kind of against the park and we want to make sure everybody stays safe while we're knocking that building down. We may need to remove trees along Horton Street to allow for the excavation activities and the trees may be impacted both by the excavation and by the in-situ thermal work. To the extent we need to remove trees, we will replace them when the excavation and thermal activities are done and the environment is conducive to so. Next slide, please. So this is a picture of temporary sound walls that'll go up during the demolition and excavation activities to try to hold down those sort of impacts of noise and dust to the neighborhood, particularly those neighbors immediately adjacent to the north. Next slide, please. And then this is showing the portion of the Horton Landing Park that will need to. Our, our thought is that we probably can get by with a fence that goes along the dirt section to the right of the concrete pathway there for most of the work and just kind of shield people from getting over that close to the site while we're digging and doing work. But during the actual demolition activities, which probably on this part of the site, you know, a week at most for them to complete that, we might have to, for periods of time, completely shut down that pathway just to make sure everybody stays safe. Next slide, please. These are the trees that are there along Horton Street. We did hire an arborist to come out and advise us as to things we might do to try to protect them during the excavation activities. And we will do our best to do that. He gave us recommendations for how close we can dig in order to protect the root structures and we'll do some investigation to see if we can leave that space there that things are clean enough to leave the soil in place and not impact them. But we may have to take out some of them just in order to get trucks in and out of the site to move the materials around that we need to do. But like I say, we will replace trees that get taken out. Next slide, please. So the next steps are the final approval of the F S RAP, I S M N D, which is expected this month, early April, approval of the RAPs in April by the DOF. And then with your approval, we will start the contractor pre-qualification process, identify those companies that would be, we'd want to have do the bidding and then get the plans and specs put together and do bidding in May-June kind of timeframe and do contractor selection, award a contract in July. And some point after that, probably take a month or two anyway for various pieces of paper to get in place to actual, before actual physical work starts up. But sometime in the fall, the site will start to have the building come down and soil excavation occur. Next slide, which I believe is the last slide. So any questions that I might answer for anyone?
Thank you. Before we take questions, Earl will go to public comment. Members of the public who wish to comment on the Redevelopment Agency's lone action item 7.1 have three minutes to do so. Did we receive any written comment cards for this item?
No, Mayor, we did not.
Okay, public comment is now closed. Director, or I'm sorry, directors. Members who wish to ask questions, I have some, but others who have questions or comments? Councilmember Mora.
Thank you for the overview. The closing of the Park Landing, is there any financially feasible way? Or is there, do, maybe we could get a sense of the cost that it would take to block the dust or debris or whatever it is that's causing us to need to close that area? Is that even technically feasible?
It probably is, you know, with money, anything's technically feasibly usual. But we are talking, I think like the complete closure, we're talking maybe a week, maybe only a few days. And we'll see. Once we get the contractor on board, it'll be somewhat their call as to whether or not they have to actually fully shut it down or if, like I say, with that fence set back along the edge of the concrete, maybe they'll feel it's safe enough for them to do their work. We might be able to do something like have a flag person out there and tell, direct people to go to the other entrance to the park during short periods when, you know, the walls are coming down and people are nervous about something happening where someone might get injured. So we'll do our best to limit that closure a, as much as we can.
Thank you.
Others who have questions? I have several. You have questions?
Not, not yet.
I have several questions. Does the pre-bidding contract presuppose or does it seek a bidder's request as to how they're going to route removal of the soil out of the city?
That gets into the plans and specifications. It's not really part of the pre-bidding process. But the routes are, you know, pretty well established from previous work that we and others have done. So the ways that trucks move for these projects through this part of the city are pretty well established. And certainly, we will share the transportation plan with the agency and the city folks to review. And if you guys don't like the route, then we'll come up with a different route.
Are we, the location for the removal of toxic soil, are we taking it to East County in Central Valley or are we taking it north?
South.
So just to clarify, so the, in terms of established routes, because we did this recently with Sherwin-Williams, as you're aware, the established route, I believe for that was to take it through West Oakland to Grand to the five, I'm sorry, the 880 and 580. It would be the 880 South. Is that what we're thinking about as a removal plan?
Yes.
Okay.
It's hard to avoid, it's hard to avoid that, actually. There's not too many other ways to go that I'm aware of.
Okay. And do we have an estimate as to how much soil is being removed?
Do, you know, it's, it's a pretty significant number of trucks for eight to 10 weeks, something like that. I don't remember the number per day off the top of my head, but it's a significant number of trucks. And then coming back, clean soil.
Okay. The Department of Toxic Substance Control, when it, it gave a green light for the Sherwin-Williams project, had a condition related to street sweeping. There's mandatory street sweeping because of arsenic and other toxics that were in the Sherwin-Williams former emulsion pack, factory site. So is there going to be an obligation to have full day street sweeping during that eight to 10 week period during haul-off?
Absolutely. You know, there's two parts to that. Part one is cleaning the trucks before they leave the site, which they do the best they can. And then street sweeping to keep the streets clean to the extent that, that things get off of there, which they tend to do. And we have dealt with this over on Shell Mound when we did Site B there next to Powell Street and other projects. So yes, clean the trucks before they leave the site, street sweeping to keep the streets clean during the process are both part of the program.
Okay. And are the trucks going to be covered?
They will be. They should be, yes.
Okay. All right.
Some of the very contaminated materials will actually likely be in bins, you know, metal-covered bins. The lesser contamination might be with the canvas coverings over the trucks.
Okay. I know, I know that the city has a long history of doing these projects and E K I has been a partner in doing many of them. Obviously, I want to just make sure that whatever project removal we do has covered truck removal, that the route, I mean, this is essentially going to take these trucks down Horton Street through a residential neighborhood to get them to the 580 freeway. And so I just want to make sure they're covered, that the street sweeping work is, you know, communicated to the residents in advance, because there are a lot of residents in that neighborhood who are very tired of street sweepers. So I think we need to be really clear about what this is and why we're doing it with the residents. I'm speaking to staff when I say this. You know, I think it would be helpful to, to kind of really communicate. I think it's good that we're doing it in July and August, to be honest with you. Most of them are on vacation, I think, and so it's probably better not competing with families and school time. My last item is the tree removal and I, I heard you, and I appreciate what you said, looking for ways to minimize the impacts. I want to just put out there, and if council, if there's a majority of council who agree, I oppose any tree removal that is not justified and approved by council. So I, you know, we, we remove lots of trees in this city and it's a huge problem, in my opinion. And I recognize this is a toxic site. Most of the contamination is situated under the north portion of this building and it is seeping to the west. So it is not moving in a direction that would move it with the groundwater under the trees that are along Horton Street. I recognize that there are some logistical issues with this. There is a large driveway to access the site, which should be sufficient to move trucks on and off and not need to remove trees. So I would just say that when we bring this back for a contract, I'm going to be asking, I'm just sharing my questions now. I'm going to be seeking council support to not approve removing trees unless there's a very clear reason why that's necessary, just because it's a practice that needs to end. That's my comment. Anyone else? No? No other questions? You have a question or comment?
I concur with, with that, but if there's a rationale.
Yeah, provided there's a sufficient rationale that's been presented, I don't otherwise approve or agree with removing trees.
I agree with that.
Okay, Vice Mayor agreed with me as well. Okay, Vice Mayor agreed with me as well. So seeing no other questions or comments, Earl, I don't have any other questions or comments here from members. I want to thank you for your time this evening. We, we have an action item in front of us, members, to approve the pre-bidding. Is there a motion on this item?
I move approval of the pre-bidding.
My second.
Okay, we have a motion by Vice Mayor Welch and a second by Member Moore to approve the resolution. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Mora.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye, thank you. Thank you, staff and to EKI for that. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:52, this meeting is adjourned. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:52. I call to order this regular city council meeting of the city of Emeryville. For the record, please note that all members are present. This time I would entertain a motion to approve this agenda.
I move approval of the agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Vice Mayor Welch, second by Councilmember Corrider, approve agenda, please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Mora.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye. Item four, special orders of the day, we have none. Item five, announcements of commission and committee vacancies, Madam Clerk.
Mayor and council, I just wanted to announce that following the return to in-person meetings in March, the Commission on Aging did have two people, two additional people resign because they couldn't attend the in-person meetings for different reasons. The committee currently has four vacancies.
Okay, so we have an active listing that's out?
We do. We had the, we, we have an open application period that closed, or closes on the third and that'll include some of them.
Okay, thank you so much. Any other announcements from, or on commission or committee vacancies, that's the only one?
That's the only one I have, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item six, council member, special announcements or reports on meetings of attendance. Member Corrider, do you have any to report? Okay, Vice Mayor Welch. Member Mora. Member Pryforce. Okay, I'll just report that this past Wednesday, I presided over a public hearing at the Barrier Quality Management District to consider and adopt amendments to rules 9-4 and 9-6 related to water heaters and furnaces. And on a vote of 20 ayes, zero noes and one abstaining, the board approved adoption of those amendments, which will bring in the beginning of phasing out the use of appliances that emit nitrogen oxides, which are extremely harmful to the environment and human health. The phase-in of those rules will be in 2027 and 2029. And if you have questions about the Air District's ruling or how we're going to implement that, you're welcome to contact me. Okay, item seven is the city manager's report. Mr. City Manager?
Just briefly, first I wanted to introduce in person our new HR Director, Lily Bell Nakamura, who we're delighted to have with us, wanted you to be able to see her in the flesh. There she is. Welcome. Second, obviously the storm has been raging. We have a number of downed trees throughout the city. We have a power line that's downed also over on Vallejo. We're asking people to avoid that area. We have closed the marina temporarily. It's just too dangerous of a place to be and there are too many trees down. We will regularly update that status on our website so people can know when it's back open, but please do avoid it for now. We have crews who are out all night and working on all these issues. Secondly, or thirdly, just a reminder that the CIP survey is still open. We would love to have people take it. So far, we've had 60 residents take the CIP survey, which is on our city's website. It'll be open through the end of March, so please let us know what you think, everybody. And then lastly, we are doing the Greenway counter ribbon cutting. That's going to be on April 1st at 10 a.m. on the Greenway at 66th Street and looking forward to seeing, hopefully all of you be there and lots of other people.
Please, if you have a bicycle, show up with a bicycle if you want to scoot, skate or walk, you are also welcome to come. Nancy, will you be there?
I will be there.
All right, Nancy will be there. Others will be here. I hear some giggles, yes. Kim, Rebecca, Pedro, you're going to be on a bike? This is the problem with him asking, asking me what day is the event going to be and then me telling him, as he picks his vacation around that. Okay, so we'll see everybody at 10 a.m. on April 1st. Ex parte communications, is there any member who wishes to report an ex parte communication for an item on this agenda? Seeing none, now's the time for public comment. A member of the public wishes to comment for an item on the consent calendar or an item not on tonight's agenda, we'll have three minutes to do so. Do we receive any written comment cards for this meeting?
No, Mayor.
Okay, public comment is now closed. Item 10 is consent. Members, there are 10 items on the consent calendar, items, sorry, 11. Items 10.1 through 10.11. Is there any item a member wishes to ask a question about, discuss further or poll for further debate and discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
I move consent calendar.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion by Vice Mayor Welch and a second by Member Mora to approve items 10.1 through 10.11 inclusive. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Mora.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye, there are no public hearings, there are no action items. Department head reports, are there any this evening?
None this evening, Mayor.
Okay, department head reports are done. Future agenda item requests from members, are there any future agenda requests from council members? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:57, this meeting is adjourned.